Thompson. Thompson absent. Carr.
Here.
Carr here. Pittman here. Pittman here. Slattery.
Here.
Slattery here. Coullos.
Here.
Coullos here. Johnson. Johnson absent. Frausto.
Here.
Frausto here. Bellato. Bellato absent. Vieda.
Here.
Vieda here. Rita. Rita absent. Donahue. Donahue absent. Holly.
Here.
Holly here. Farrenwell.
Here.
Farrenwell here. Osling.
Here.
Osling here. My Honored.
Thank you much. Next we move on to the presentation of general proceedings. I have a motion to approve the city council minutes for the date of April the 10th of 2018, a special meeting of the date of April 16th of 2018. Motion to adjourn. I will say my honorable firm of all. Any questions? Roll call please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling aye. Nine ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Next we move on to public comment. Again, I welcome anyone to talk. Three minutes. Uh, what's on the agenda? I'll just need your name next.
My name is Mark Keener. I live at 2250 Orson Street. I'm here tonight to express my dissatisfaction with the way the public was treated at the hearing that was held last Thursday. That there were dozens of people here who wished to express their opinions and also to sit and watch the proceedings go on with the hearing about the Island Sports Bar and Grill. That out of the dozens of people who were here, they, many were told that if they wanted to make a comment, they had to wait outside in the lobby or escorted out there with police. Other people who wanted to hear the meeting had to make up their minds whether they wanted to listen or wait for a chance to speak. And after waiting for four hours, they were told the meeting was adjourned and they still did not get a chance to speak. That was a violation of the Open Meetings Act. That people were not allowed to speak when they were told that they would get a chance to speak. There are other violations of the Open Meetings Act as well, as far as posting it publicly and as far as the agenda being presented. So that meeting just had no legal authority, that I understand, for even taking place. Was there a legal authority for that meeting taking place?
No comment. No vote? Anything else?
Well, I think, you know, the public really is curious and wants to know. I've heard a lot of talk about whether it was a public meeting or not a public meeting or what kind of a hearing or trial it was.
It was a trial. It still is a trial. It's still pending, so I can't make any comment.
Under what authority is it a trial?
It's a hearing.
But conducted by who?
By me. It's the commissioner.
And who else is on this commission?
It's me, by myself.
So you're the one sole authority.
Yes.
But as I understand, this hearing, this trial, has to do with the, the business license of the Island Sports Bar and Grill.
You know what? I cannot comment on it. It's still pending. It's coming back up on Thursday at 1:30. It's just the same procedures as a trial. People who will testify cannot be in the same courtroom when people are testifying. And I'll leave it at that. Anything else?
Uh, yes. Uh, there is also the, the question of the business licenses and liquor licenses are granted by this city council. So I would assume that the city council would have some, something to do with this trial, this hearing, this public meeting, whatever you want to call it.
Those are further proceedings in the future. If maybe.
Okay. All right. Thank you for responding.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll just need your name and number.
My name is Thomas Madrigal. I reside at 13427 Bozer.
Mr.?
Thank you, Your Honor, and so the council members, let me say a few words here. Saturday I was privileged to attend a benefits basketball game at St. Benedict's with the Police Department and Fire Department. And it's, it's nice to have these police officers, officers, department do that because at times of time these guys are, could be in harm's way. And that's, it's nice to see that situation. A lot of times they're out there, you know, as far as responding to calls, stuff like that. So it was, it was a nice outing for a change. And as you people know, I'm very patriotic American. I'm a, you know, a person, I'm Mexican, but I'm first American. And I remember when I was, went to military, you know, when I was Boy Scout here in town, I took an oath to defend the U.S. Constitution from foreign domestic enemies. And I do. Like I said, I, I'm not a politic people. I don't, I don't lean politic as what's best for the city. And that flag there was draped on 10 of my friends I served in Vietnam. And that's, you know, that's, that's a lot. And like I said, I just, I'd just like to mention, I get, I did a tattoo or something. Uh, what was the last month I was at Bob's Auto with Vincent Savvy? Uh, my wife's had a small fender bit and she came to car repair. And I noticed a lot of fast traffic going down that Vincent's, must be people 20 miles, 30 miles over speed, just chuchu. And that's, you know, that's, that's dangerous. Is there, does the police, uh, police department, do they patrol that area either?
In fact, if you've driven on Vincent's Avenue this morning, you have the speed trap machine here.
Okay. Cause I just, even on Western Avenue, they just come down. Oh, for the last, I just, I was concerned for the, you know, citizens and children. So thank you very much for listening and attending. Thank you. Nice evening.
Anyone else? Name and address.
Carol DePaes Green, 2731 Orchard Street, Blue Island. We are aware there are aldermen who have not been updated regarding the Jawa lawsuits. Our Blue Island Jawa representative has not kept the city council or citizens up to date. We've been informing the city council about all of the Jawa lawsuits. We feel all of the aldermen need to be fully informed and updated regarding the current Circuit Court judgment of nearly $8 million, along with Postal's appellate court appeal. It is in the best interest of the community that all of the city council go into executive session so that all the aldermen can be knowledgeable about the seriousness of this nearly $8 million judgment. It appears to those of us who've worked on the Jawa problem for years that the administration and city council are not communicating well because of the political fractionalism that can cause terrible harm to our community and in this case, because of the $8 million judgment. We strongly suggest that you go into executive session so every alderman can understand the magnitude of what's going on. We know the Jawa is defunct. However, was Jawa formally dissolved or signed off on by any of the communities before Postal initiated his lawsuit? We would like to see written evidence of a complete legal dissolution of the Jawa. In the Jawa meetings, Mike Stillman, the attorney, made it very clear, he's with Olson and Serp, that the Jawa could not be dissolved as long as there was any outstanding debt or pending litigation. We don't know what the underwriters did with the money that was left in the Jawa when they took over. We don't know the details of what happened with the initial investment, along with the attorney fees that have certainly already been wasted. We do know that our Blue Island aldermen should be advocating for their constituents, Blue Island taxpayers, and the public, and that has not happened at all. How does the average citizen participate in the appellate court hearings? And what is happening with the appellate court hearing at this point? We know that the attorneys for the communities submitted a brief to the appellate court on April 13th, according to the limited information that we have. Is there going to be a hearing for that, that the public can participate in?
Can I comment on pending litigation?
Okay. Because, you know, one of the possible alternatives would be, you know, for the citizens to be able to participate or file a friends of the court brief, possibly. This is a lot of money that we're talking about.
I understand.
And of course, some of you may be aware, Robbins, a participant in the Jawa, is $13 million in debt to Chicago for water. We know that we have Jawa bills that we have to pay for the loans, for the Jawa, for our portion of the initial several million dollars that was, that we sold bonds for.
Anything else?
And we're going to be paying for that for the next 20 years? It's, is it already paid off?
We're out of it.
I under, I, I know you're saying that we're out of it, but we're not out of it. I'm sure that we're still paying on those bonds.
We're out of it. Anything else?
I don't think we're out of it, Mayor. Not if we're filing an appellate court brief. We can't be out of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Now, I am set to report on, early Sunday morning, I received a text that former Alderman DiSaro had passed away. Uh, he was living in Arkansas, and I, the last that I know, uh, he would always send us, and I think y'all been, about for this, he'd always send us Christmas cards. If it wasn't a Christmas card, we would get a phone call from him personally, no matter what time, however he was feeling, he'd always make sure to get in contact with all of us or the ones that were close to him. Uh, I have the honor as an alderman to be serving alongside him. If I'm understanding, he also served as professor, or no?
Yeah.
We'll let, we'll let, uh, Parma, if you know a little bit more about this.
Really? I, I know that basically he was an alderman from 1916, 67, somewhere in there, until 2005.
2005.
2005. He was also mayor pro tempore, pro tempore, a special election for a year and a half until the special election took place. That was Mr. Harzak, uh, was his first term as mayor for about a year and a half, two years, then he stepped down and resigned because of personal conflicts. And then there was a special, between the aldermen, the process takes place, the choosing of temporary mayor. So he was temporary mayor for about a year, year and a half until a special election. And then the special election was held in 77, if I recall, and that's where Mayor Rita came in to finish the term. And either he went, he stepped, he stepped down and then he came back and ran again for alderman. So there was a time of possibility he might have been treasured temporarily. I'm not sure.
But he has a long legacy.
Forty years.
Long legacy in the city of Blue Island, and we acknowledge that. That's why you see the bounty up in front of the city hall. Uh, a great man, a great servant of this community. Uh, he will be deeply remiss, but as we say, the cliche, he will never be forgotten. Um, we've been trying to get information from anyone, family or friends, and we have not been successful. Uh, but if anybody of you know any information, please let us know.
Yeah.
Please say.
Saturday, 10:30 to 11:30, St. George Church and Tinnecreek.
Okay. So we got that spot on. All right. So we got, we have that information. So I would encourage all of us, whoever can attend, please attend on behalf of the city and the people of the community. Um, I also have some other information. There will be a dedication, a vivian cutting ceremony, again, for Bootcap. There's an open house and fundraiser. This is on April 28th, 2018, from 2:00 to 3:00 P.M. That's at Bootcap, and then the open house and fundraiser says at Jen Mansfield's home, 12134 Greenwood Avenue, Blue Island, Illinois, again, on the same day. But that's, the open house and fundraiser is from 3:00 to 8:00 P.M. I'll have this up here if you ever want to get more information regarding that. Uh, did we see correspondence from the American Legion Post 50? They want to have permission to attempt to hold any whole annual operation, honor event in Memorial Park. Again, gratitude to all veterans, respect, and current military service members. The guy will be held at Memorial Park at 12824 Highland, and the date is the first Saturday of August, uh, and the date is the 25th of August, 2018, to the hours of 12:00 P.M. and 11:00. And again, I'll bring this back to the council for approval, et cetera. Another thing, and this I mentioned last time, about that nail polish for the ladies. Uh, I've seen that some of the ladies have already started, showing their colors for the city. If the ones who don't know, OPI, I think is the name of the company.
OPI.
And then there's another one called D something. It came to my attention that they have a nail polish called Blue Island, Illinois. It's a blue. It's not a dark blue. It's a light blue. And the local salons here, nail salons, do have it. And we're going to try to get, see if we have all the ladies show their city colors in private city. That's something promotional, again, for good America. Why did you pick Blue Island? Blue Island, I, because we're great. Okay. But of all the cities, it's called Blue Island, Illinois. That's the name of the product. Or Blue Island Blue. Each company has its own name. So that's, uh, city courts business.
Yes, I have five requests this evening, Your Honor. The first one is a motion to approve a request from Marisol Chavez to have a block party 120th and Washington, May 5th, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
I have a motion by Alderman Osling. Do I have a second? By Alderman Pittman. Any questions? Roll call please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Next, I need a motion to approve a request from Salvation Army for their annual doughnut day on Friday and Saturday, June 1st and 2nd, 2018, and their Red Kettle campaign from Monday to Saturday, November 1st to December 24th, 2018.
I have a motion by Alderman Holly. Do I have a second? By Alderman Coullos. Any questions? Roll call please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Next, I need a motion to approve a request from Maple Tree and to have their annual doughnuts on Sunday, July 18th, from 12:00 noon until 9:00 P.M.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Bellato. Second by Alderman Osling. Any questions? Roll call please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
And next, I need a motion to approve a request from St. John's Catholic Church to hold their 109th annual feast inferno starting on Wednesday, August 3rd through Sunday, August 5th. These day mass will be held 10:00 a.m. on Sunday, August 5th.
Motion by Alderman Bellato. Do I have a second? By Alderman Pittman. Any questions? Roll call please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
And last, I need a motion to approve a request from the Muscular Visceral Association for Blue Island Clarifiers to hold a fill the boot tag day on May 25th and June 22nd and July 20th, 2018.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion by Alderman Vera, second by Alderman Holly? Any questions? Roll call please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any bids, citywide?
No bids this evening, Your Honor.
Citywide?
Thank you, Your Honor. All the aldermen should receive the path of transition, restricted funds and non-restricted funds, and the total goes to 606,000, 925,000. And, yeah, the motion, match it.
A motion, yeah. The motion by Alderman Osling, second by Alderman Carr. Any questions? Alderman?
Um, transfer Bellato. I'm here and shows, I just wanted to clarify this. A transfer, is that a transfer from the golf course of 37,000?
Take it from the golf course, yes. Pay accounts.
Under... Yeah, approval of inter-fund transfers?
Those are, these are all for accounts payable. These, this sheet here, all the money that's been transferred to pay accounts payable.
Okay, but this, what I'm saying is, this money was transferred from the golf course?
From the golf course to the general profit.
Okay, so that would be a profit from the golf course?
There's, there's one now. There's a profit?
Well, that's money that the golf course collected, correct?
There's money that has been transferred to pay expenses.
From the golf course?
From the golf course.
From the revenue, correct? You got a motion? Do we have a second?
The second, ladies.
Do we have a second? Alderman, not, uh, Bellato. Any questions? Then roll call.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
One other thing, uh, to point back to the Sabato situation, here I would ask if it's all possible that the city, uh, with the proper sort of knowledge of being, uh, this resolution, some sort of paperwork that they can give to the family for the 40-year service that they dedicate to the Blue Island.
Thank you. You're welcome. Anything else? Nothing? Uh, city attorney?
Mr. Mayor, there are a number of items on the agenda. The first is an ordinance approving the class subdivision concerning 2330 Burl Avenue, Blue Island, Illinois.
I need a motion by Alderman Fairmore, second by Alderman Bellato. Any questions? Roll, questions, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify for people who might be watching, this is the plot of land next to the Parkers Gas Station on 127th Street?
Yes.
But it's not there.
Correct. Uh, roll call please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
The next is an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of First Amendment to Intergovernmental Agreement between the Forest Reserve District of Cook County and Blue Island, Illinois, for Cal Sag Trail East segment in brief. This abends the intergovernmental agreement to set forth the ownership and maintenance requirements with respect to the bridge that will connect Phase 4 to unlimited is the Joe Louis Golf Course.
A motion by Alderman Vera, second by Alderman Bellato. Any questions? Roll call.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwell aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling aye. Ten ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
The next is an ordinance abending Title 11 Business Regulations, Chapter 111, Alcohol and Liquor of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, to establish record review. This adds a provision to the current liquor control ordinance that provides that if there is a review of any decision of the local liquor control commissioner with respect to a suspension or revocation, the official record may be for the liquor control commissioner at the hearing will be reviewed by the Illinois Liquor Control Commission in lieu of another full and complete hearing and trial.
A motion? Motion by Alderman Bellato, second by Alderman Vera. Any questions? Roll call.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos aye. Frausto.
Aye.
Frausto aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye. Farrenwell.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Ten eyes, your honor.
Thank you.
The next is an ordinance restricting a portion of a certain street at or near twenty-eight-nineteen Minnesota Avenue for handicap parking only in the City of Blue Island, County of Cook, State of Illinois, and providing penalties for the violation thereof.
Your motion? Alderman Carr, second by Alderman Pittman. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Ten eyes, your honor.
Thank you.
The next is a resolution of the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, supporting a Class VIII Real Estate Tax Assessment Classification for one-thirty-six-eleventh Thornton Road, GK Real Estate Group, Inc.
Your motion? Alderman Osling, second by Alderman, um, Frosto. Any questions?
This is old Robertson, transfer.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Ten eyes, your honor.
Thank you.
The next item is a resolution authorizing an insurance contract with AIX Specialty Insurance Company for commercial general liability insurance for the City of Blue Island. This is for insurance for the three Metro parking lots.
Your motion? Alderman Osling, second by Alderman Vera. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Ten eyes, your honor.
Thank you.
The next item is a res- excuse me, a resolution authorizing a letter agreement with Servicegate LLC for golf course maintenance services. This provides for a three-year agreement with Servicegate.
Your motion by Alderman Osling, second by Alderman Carr. Any questions? Roll call.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Ten eyes, your honor.
Thank you.
And the last item is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Employee Benefits Corporation for services for the city to comply with the Consolidated Omnivist Reconciliation Act of nineteen eighty-five. Essentially, what this does is put in place a program through this company to issue notifications to employees, what employees, what are former employees when necessary, and then are required pursuant to the Cobra statute.
Your motion? Alderman Vera, second by Alderman Holly. Any questions? Roll call.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Ten eyes.
Thank you. Anything else, Council?
No, members of the council, we did provide you with a memo explaining the nature of the hearing that is taking place presently, so that you have a full and complete understanding of, uh, what the city is doing and how it is going forward. That is the liquor hearing.
Thank you. Any committee reports, committee of all committees?
Yes, your honor, uh, we, uh, had a meeting on Thursday, March first. The meeting was called to order at seven P.M. Present were Alderman Holly, Bellato, Frosto, Osling, and Thompson. Absent were Alderman Viera and Johnson. Also present were Mark Knoller and Director Mike Marzal. There was no public comment. Uh, we had two liquor licenses to review. One was for Durango Restaurant. A majority of their income is derived from food, and this will help them compete with other restaurants in the area. It was moved by Alderman Osling and second by Alderman Frosto to recommend issuing a liquor license. All were in favor. Motion passed. P.L. and Din, the former Gaylo's Bar down on Old Western, uh, was requesting a transfer of their liquor license currently held by the bar at that location. Alderman Frosto noted that the hours began at six A.M. who would like to see them began at eleven A.M. It was explained they wanted to show rugby games and other special events happening in Ireland from time to time. Alderman Frosto would like to recommend an eleven A.M. open time and to notify the mayor's office for earlier start times. We made that a motion, and the second by Alderman Bellato's motion passed. We reviewed the Thornton's Blue Stone Development Request to Clean Up the Pins on the property at twenty-three-thirty, uh, one-hundred-and-twenty-seventh Street, uh, making it two pins. Uh, one is for the gas station, and one is for the other property that, uh, that will make it easier for them to sell or lease and clean up this area, the pins in this area. It was moved by Alderman Bellato and second by Alderman Osling to pass this to the city council. All were in favor. Motion passed. Under sign reviews, a sign was presented by Midway Storage. Uh, it did not comply with the sign code as presented. Alderman Bellato moved in Alderman Thompson's segment to deny. They'll work on a sign design that complies. All were in favor. Motion to deny. Passed. Blue Sky, uh, the formal, uh, former brand of bottle, presented a sign, um, that included, uh, removing just the outside part of the existing sign and replacing it with a non-compliant sign. After discussion, it was decided to ask them to bring the sign into compliance with the sign code. Motion was made by Alderman Osling and second by Alderman Thompson to deny the sign as presented. All were in favor. Motion to deny. Passed. Director Marzal reported that we are switching over to a new nine-one-one rave system, which is included with our nine-one-one package with Orland Park. The other system, Code Red, will be discontinued. Uh, numbers will be ported over. You can, uh, find out how to sign up for that if you haven't signed up already. You can sign up, uh, find out how to sign up for that on the, uh, city's website at blueisland.org. That will help you keep, uh, abreast of what's going on in town, special events, any kind of dan- uh, dangerous situations, or bad weather, or other concerns. So, please sign up for that. Um, under Alderman's concerns, questions were asked about Love on the Blue, what's happening with them. Their main hours are breakfast and lunch from nine A.M. to three P.M., but occasionally they have special events. There have been some complaints about some parking issues. It was moved by Alderman Bellato and second by Alderman Thompson to adjourn. All were in favor. Meeting was adjourned at seven thirty-six P.M. The next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May third, at seven P.M. in City Council Chambers.
Thank you very much. Finance Committee?
Finance meeting called to order on April seventeenth at seven oh five. Members present, Alderman Farrenwald, Alderman Vera, Alderman Frosto, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Holly, and Alderman Osling. Also present, Mike Marzal, Director of Finance Administration, Lori Brown, Deputy Chief of Finance, Ted Ruthenberg, Clay Putnam, Servicegate, and Nick Carnavas, G.I. Real Estate, and Bob Manta. There was no public comment. Um, at this time, I would like to, um, ask Director Mike Marzal to come to the podium to present the accounts payable.
Yes, uh, in your package, we included the accounts payable, uh, totaling eight-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand, fifty-two dollars and sixty-one cents. Due to the cancellation of the, uh, previous Tuesday's council meeting, uh, the accounts payable system was not able to generate the accounts payable list in a timely fashion to get it to the Finance Committee. So, the accounts payable as presented this evening has not been reviewed by the Finance Committee. It was a consensus of the Finance Committee to forward the accounts payable without their review to City Council for review and approval. Staff is prepared to answer the questions, and you may have, um, the accounts payable.
Any questions?
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the accounts payable for April twenty-fifth in the amount of eight-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand, fifty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Your motion, you are second by Alderman Holly. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Ten eyes.
Thank you.
Um, a motion, um, Finance approved and reviewed the, um, payroll, and I'd like to make a motion, um, to City Council to approve the payroll for April sixth in the amount of three-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand, fifty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Your motion, you are second by Alderman Farrenwald. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Ten eyes, your honor.
Thank you.
Okay, I also want to make a motion to enter into an agreement with Latnir to inspect the Division Street Bridge.
Your motion? Alderman Vera, second by Alderman Pittman. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Ten eyes, your honor.
Thank you.
Um, I have a request for approval of payment for Thornton's twenty-seventeen tax rebate. This is only sales tax on property which comes from the business district. Motion carried from Finance, I make a motion to City Council to approve.
Motion, you are second by Alderman Farrenwald. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Coullos.
Aye.
Coullos, aye. Frosto. Kulos, aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye, Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Farinwell.
Aye.
Farinwell, aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye, ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
No further business, a motion to adjourn at eight fifteen. Our next meeting is May first, two thousand eighteen, seven P.M. in the East Annex.
Thank you very much. Alderman Kelfen, Sam, can you come in?
Yes, Your Honor, I have the meetings from the, uh, minutes from the meeting of March thirteenth. Present were Chief LaSalle King, Deputy Chief Bernie Arzab, Chief Dan Rida, Alderman Ken Pittman, Alderman George Kulos, Alderman Kevin Donahue, Alderman Dexter Johnson, and myself. Also in attendance were Mark Mass from Demasty Catering, Dave Brown from Rock Island Public House, Mike Marzal, Alderman Jan Osling, and Alderman Letty Vieira. Meeting was called to order at six P.M. Um, Mike Marzal did a presentation on the places of eating tax and explained that this would raise approximately forty thousand dollars in additional revenue. Alderman Kulos asked if this would be on top of the current sales tax and expressed that he felt this would be excessive. Alderman Donahue went on record as being against the tax, as did Alderman Pittman. Alderman Johnson spoke in favor of the tax and said we must pursue other areas of revenue. Alderman Carr asked if this additional money would be earmarked for special projects. Mr. Marzal indicated that it would go into the general fund to support city services. Mark Mass spoke against the tax, saying that this would severely impact his catering business. Dave Brown spoke against the tax, saying that his operating margin is too small for him to absorb the tax and mentioned that he has not seen any benefit from the additional one percent sales tax that was instituted previously. Alderman Carr explained that much of the one percent sales tax is being held in reserve for upcoming business district projects. Dave Brown suggested that the budget shortfall be filled in by the salaries of city personnel positions that have been eliminated. Under the Fire Department report, there were two hundred and twenty-five EMS responses, sixty-five fire responses, seven auto aid responses, and eleven mutual aid responses. They collected forty-four thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-one cents for the month of February. Fire recovery received was one thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. Under general information, the union negotiations are ongoing. Under fire prevention, inspectors spent the month conducting annual inspections and plan reviews. A schedule was put together for fire present- prevention staff and shared with the building department in an ongoing attempt to improve communications between the two departments. The compliance engine program has been working, and they are able to reach out to more businesses in town. Um, under the ambulance fee increase, Chief Rida recommended the ambulance fees for non-resident billing be increased from one thousand dollars to eleven hundred dollars, and our resident billing be increased from eight hundred dollars to eight hundred and fifty, and the mileage from ten dollars a mile to sixteen dollars a mile. Projected increase in revenue would be thirty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars. Alderman Kulos made note that many of the surrounding towns had much lower rates. Alderman Johnson suggested that the bulk of the increase be shifted to non-residents. Alderman Carr asked what the average charge for the surrounding area was, which is nine hundred and eighty-one dollars for non-residents, eight hundred and nineteen dollars for residents, and a fourteen dollar charge for mileage. From the police department, Deputy Chief Cornell stepped down to the civil service rank of sergeant. Corporal Arzab was appointed as interim deputy chief. Sergeant Harrell remains as the administrative sergeant. Officer Nick Babbitt has graduated from DARE training and taught his first class at St. Benedict's School. Under training, Deputy Chief Arzab attended training on internal affairs and professional standards. Corporal Sephacy attended training on use of force. Deputy Chief Arzab, Officer Elton, Officer Strezel, Officer Babbitt, and Officer Rhodes attended training for AED and CPR. Corporal Sephacy and Officer Strezel attended training on standardized field sobriety testing, and Officer Stamer attended training relating to use of force. Uh, there was a total of two thousand two hundred and twenty-seven calls for service in February, and under cases of interest, on February seventeenth, police officers responded to twenty-one forty-five West one hundred and thirty-fifth Place per report of a home invasion. As officers arrived, a subject known to law enforcement was observed exiting from the building with superficial facial injuries. The subject reported that he had been the victim of a home invasion and said one offender was known to him. The incident is suspected to have been drug-related. Also, officers have taken four firearms off the street since January first of two thousand eighteen. Uh, Vieira did not attend the meeting. There were no Alderman's concerns. The meeting was adjourned at six forty-seven. Our next meeting will be made at eight, at six o'clock during these days.
Thank you very much. A, uh, committee on municipal services, do you have a report? Ask for a motion to waive a portion of fees and penalties for one thirty-five twenty-seven Chad Street. Yes, you have the motion, it was second by Alderman Carr. Any questions?
Okay. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye, Pittman.
No.
Pittman, no, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye, Kulos.
Aye.
Kulos, aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye, Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye, Farinwell.
Aye.
Farinwell, aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye, ten ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much. Any others? Thank you. Judiciary Committee?
Uh, yes, I have the minutes of the committee meeting of Monday, April sixteenth, in the East Annex. Called to order at six P.M. Excuse me, present were Alderman Carr, and Val, Pittman, Slattery, Vieira, and absent was Alderman Kulos. Also present were Leslie Kennedy, Olson Stewart, Michael Lazzare, Director of Marzal, Director of Finance Administration Fred Bellato, Alderman, Captain Bellato, Treasurer, and President Mike Snay, Snay. Uh, public comment, Alderman Bellato and Resident Sin both expressed support for the ordinance